You all. And I don't know what it is, but my entire life has been surrounded by really extraordinary public educators. And Beth is easily one of those people. So Beth, I hope you watch this. How many times have we been with Beth for five, six hour meetings where she didn't say a word because we didn't need to ask her anything? But she was there. Always happy to answer. But I talk about no sleep. I have never met a person who can function as well as that woman does on genuinely no sleep. She will go to a Lions game on a Sunday, had season tickets forever, and then she will re-watch the entire game at three o'clock in the morning on NFL Network. And then she'll roll into work. And then it's like, doesn't skip a beat. Whereas I am crabby Appleton. If I don't get, if I don't get my sleep, I'm not functioning. It just, it was always amazing to me. And again, the compassion. And I think the final word I would use for her is simply love. That woman loves what she does and the people she does it with. It was always solution forward. So Beth, much love to you. Thank you for the influence you've had in my life, learning from you the past two years. And on behalf of the students and the families that you serve, your colleagues, you're not very far away, and I'm sure we're going to need you, so please take our call. I'll be out if you block me. Then I'm going to, I'm going to have to leave all this. But maybe make it happy now before that happens. Much love for Beth Sanders, as she starts her journey at Wayne Reese, I believe, Rebecca, August 1st. On August 1st. So if any board members would like to reach out and give her a hey there, in the next couple of weeks, she'll still be here.
Good to know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Go ahead. I was going to say, I wanted to say something.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like I have way more to say than what is probably appropriate. But I, I do want to acknowledge the multiple directions in which she reaches out and helps. And you, you mentioned all of the ones that were most important because it involves students and families and teachers and Cook and, and beyond. But I, I, I think I'd be remiss in not acknowledging the generations of school board members that she has oriented before they even got to the table, who were seeking and understanding about the, the needs and interests of the district and caring for all of our special needs students. And it's a complicated world. And if you, you can't, you know, you can read the words, but it just doesn't begin to really open you up to how complicated it is and how much, what it takes to do it well. And so she would take us, I'm speaking for myself, but I, maybe it resonates with those of you at the table. She would take us from, take me from zero to an ability to at least understand the language and to read the policies with some kind of appreciation and glimpse the direction of continuous learning that I need to take in order to be effective at the board. So, and she did that over and over and over. New batches of school board members show up every two years. So I, maybe you, you know, maybe that speaks to you because I bet we all took advantage of her.
Sure, sure.
She is a remarkable person and never made us feel like we were taking up too much time or asking a stupid question or, you know, trying to write down the definitions while, you know, she's talking. I just think it's really an exemplary gift of self that she gave to us as a board, so.
I agree. Yeah, same. I would double tap on that. And then I would also lift up all the effort that she did on Northville Cares to really bring in so many community partners and, you know, at so many of those meetings, there would be a new community partner that would come and they would have a new resource to share. And that was just great for our community and I, and I hope it also helped those community partners as well. And I'm looking forward to seeing that continue. And she's just so, so skilled in terms of bringing people into the fold and helping them understand all of the layers that impact kids and public education and families and, and special needs, whatever they are. So I'm grateful for the time that I got to work with her as well. And she's, you know, like so many of the people on our cult team, happy to pick up the phone, quick return calls back. And just, she'll, I will very much miss you, Beth. So, hope to see her soon. And I love the baker, too. There were many meetings that she would bring us treats and it was like, oh gosh, this is delightful, delightful thing, too. So thanks for that chance to lift her up, too, while she's met with us tonight. Okay. All right. I guess this is our first opportunity for public comments, then. I don't think we have any blue cards? Okay, all right. So moving on then to you, Ms. Meyer.
All right. So this brings us to motion three, that the board award a one-year probationary NEA teacher an auxiliary contract to the following staff at the 25, 26 school year as presented. Megan Horning, Cook School Teacher, Grace Morgan Elementary Teacher, Nathaniel Bryan, Cook School Teacher, and Shay Morrison, NHS Speech and Language Pathologist.
Support. All right, we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Ms. Stewart. Excited to hear more.
Absolutely. Thank you, President McIntyre. So we're excited to have all four recommended hires with us this evening. First among them, Emma Grace Morgan. Grace comes to us from Ohio, where she spent her first two years as a classroom teacher in fourth and fifth grade classrooms, respectively, while serving in Xenia Community Schools. It just so happens, the position that, that Grace is going to be fulfilling at Ridgewood is a, is a fourth grade position. So she has that experience that she comes to us with in, in, in working with fourth graders. She's a graduate of University of Dayton, having completed her Bachelor of Science degree in early childhood education. Despite, once again, competitive field, a theme that we've seen throughout the hiring season. Our interview team, that included myself, elementary principals, including Ms. Terry, and some of our elementary teachers from Ridgewood viewed Grace as the unanimous choice for this position. Her understanding of literacy resonated during her interview. While a constant theme that emerged during her interview was her intentionality around emotional, around social emotional learning and its importance. Grace's former colleagues in Xenia, which included her former principal, all indicated their disappointment that she was leaving Ohio, Ohio and Xenia schools.
Ohio.
Yeah, Ohio.
That's nice. Well done.
Go Blue.
I was thinking it, you said it.
I could see that, too, because Grace is not a Buckeye, so. Her principal, in fact, shared how Grace had a, a group of challenging students when she taught fourth grade during her first year of teaching, but that she worked so well with them that she wound up moving up with them into the fifth grade classroom. She, she further shared how Grace's students excelled academically with the data to support. So we're excited about Grace's potential addition to the Ridgewood team and are recommending her for hire accordingly. Grace Morgan. For our Cook School hires, first and foremost, Morgan Horning. There in the back. Morgan possesses a clear mission to serve individuals with special needs, as evidenced not only through her resume and overall background, but when you listen to her speak. She has been serving in some capacity at the Living and Learning Enrichment Center since 2018, when she was still in high school. Not surprisingly, her career trajectory has been in alignment with this mission, having completed her Bachelor of Education in Intervention Specialist at Bowling Green University, with completions, completion of her Master's of Education in Applied Behavior Analysis pending for this September. Further supporting this trajectory are her certifications in autism spectrum disorders, cognitive impairments, emotional impairments, and learning disabilities. In fact, I can't remember who said it, it may have been Beth, but someone on our interview team committee suggested they had never seen that many certifications covering special services. Degrees and certifications are certainly important and one thing, but Morgan possesses a passion and heart for individuals with special needs, a passion that came through loud and clear during her interview process and was further supported by her references. As such, we believe Morgan would be a powerful addition to our Cook team, and we thus bring her forward for hire this evening. And then also from Cook this evening is Nathaniel Nate Bryan. There's Nate. Nate's a graduate of the University of Nebraska at Kearney, where he played football and received his Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and International Studies. He has since secured teaching certifications in cognitive impairments, emotional impairments, learning disabilities, and social studies. Nate is described by his references as calm and cool. And, you know, when you meet Nate, you definitely, that definitely resonates, which is real important when you consider some of the behaviors that our, our staff encounter in, in, in supporting our Cook students. So, you know, and to that end, he connects extremely well with students and manages behaviors exceptionally well. Despite some family in Michigan, Nate has spent the entirety of his teaching career in Texas, serving in two different districts, Katy Independent School District and then Sanguine Independent School District. Between the two districts, he fulfilled, fulfilled a variety of teaching roles, including the role of behavior specialist, speaking again to his, his disposition and ability to manage behaviors, and credit recovery teacher. In addition, he served as an assistant coach for Katy High School Varsity Football Team on teams that were state champions in both 2015 and 2020. That's saying something when you consider how big high school football is in Texas. Nate's experience would undoubtedly be an asset to Cook School and its students, and we recommend him accordingly. I cannot talk tonight, forgive me. Nate Bryan. And then last, but certainly not least, for Northville High School Speech and Language Pathologist, Shannon Shay Morrison. Shay holds her Bachelor of Science degree in neuroscience from the University of Michigan, go Blue again, where she graduated with honors. While she started her career working in dentistry, she recognized at one point that while her passion was working with people and helping them, she desired a different career path. Shay reported her mother, who is a teacher and special educator, helped direct Shay's interests and passions toward speech and language pathology, and we're pleased that that proved to be the case, as Shay just completed her Master of Arts at Eastern Michigan University in Communication Sciences and Disorders. In so doing, she completed her internships in both the clinical setting and the school setting, including the Lincoln Center, that is part of Windout Public Schools, where many students there are non-verbal. Her references, who served as her supervisors in both of these respective settings, were both extremely complimentary of Shay. Discussing her work with those she was serving, her growth and the team player that she is. Our interview team was equally impressed and is pleased to recommend Shay Morrison for hire as a speech and language pathologist this evening. Shay Morrison. On behalf of the Central Office Administrative Team, I recommend that the Board of Education approve a probationary contract for Emma Grace Morgan, Morgan Horning, Nathaniel Bryan, and Shay Morrison for the 25, 26 school year. Obviously, you have your supporting documentation included in your board packet, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Always so impressed with the caliber of new staff that you bring forward. So this is, I'm excited. I know that it's a busy summer, busy time to, you know, get, get all of that process through, and seems like you found some really amazing people and excited to bring them on to Northville. Any questions or comments or? All right, let's go ahead with, yeah, we've already, we have some, yeah, motion properly presented, all those things. Let's go ahead with a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, welcome aboard.
I always feel like it's a little anticlimactic.
I know.
You know, it's like, I went like, like, ta-da. Balloons or something.
Yes. Right. Bring some back.
I know.
Maybe definitely say yes today.
Ooh. Okay. All right.
It's neat that three of the hires, we talked about Beth, we talked about serving students with special needs.
And, you know, it's always exciting.
Well, living and learning.
Well, yes, obviously, living and learning, you know. But I was going to say the, you know, the starting out teachers. I love to see that it's like, we're getting good people at the ground level.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
It's everything, actually.
I'm excited for Ridgewood. That's good.
Yeah. Such a good school.
All right, then let's move on to our next. Are we ready? Okay. And then next up, we have Finance and Operations, Meads Mill Change Order.
All right, let me find my.
All right. Thank you. Is your mic on?
It is on.
Is it green? Because I didn't have mine.
Yours is not. I forgot mine's on.
Thanks for letting me know.
Well, you, you were doing so well. Didn't want to interrupt.
We didn't want to interrupt.
Right.
I think so.
I will bring forth motion number four, that the board approved the Meads Mill Change Order totaling $42,914 as referenced in July 11th, 2025 construction memo as presented.
Support. We have a motion properly presented by Treasurer Stewart, supported by Secretary Meyer. Looking forward to hearing a little bit more. I know we have had it in our packet, and we've been talking about some of those different changes that are going to come down our path, so this looks like one of them.
Yeah, thank you, President McIntyre. This is a change order for some roof work at Meads Mill. As you, as you see in the packet, it's just under $43,000. Steve, I don't know if you want to add any details to the project?
Good evening. There's a small section of roof that means it's going to be significantly impacted by the addition. It was going to be picked up last summer or in a future roofing project, but the team decided we really should tackle it while we're doing the addition, so that's why we're bringing the change order forward tonight.
All right, makes sense. Makes sense. Seems like we need a good, good solid roof. Hard to learn when the roof is leaking.
And it makes sense to do it if you're already in there doing work. You might as well.
Correct.
Do it at the same time.
This fall, we're probably going to give you a little bit of update as far as, you know, the next four years of what both the bond projects, sinking fund projects, and roofing projects are going to look like. There's two large areas left to do at Meads that we're looking at probably 27 once majority of construction is done, because when you get in larger buildings, try to do roofing and construction, it gets kind of complicated. But this is a smaller section, like I said, trying to wrap up to do with the addition.
Makes sense.
It does. You know, actually, I was thinking, oh, it's darn, it's one of those surprises, you know, surprise soft spots that you run into when you're doing construction and you're, you know, you take something off and you went, oh, I didn't expect that. But it's not that at all. There really is a, you know, a sequence, as you just alluded to, of doing the construction first and maybe the, and holding off on the roofing. And this is just a, a decision. It wasn't a surprise.
This is a decision. It wasn't, we don't, it would be really silly if we didn't do it, but we, it isn't a surprise. Correct.
Like, we had a, didn't we have a surprise?
Yeah, we're going to have lots of surprises. This is not the end of the surprise train.
Not the caboose.
Steve's full of surprises. Good news, all kinds of things. But this is a conscious decision to what makes sense.
Okay, great. Love it. Yeah, thank you for bringing the change order forward, right? It would be very easy just to say, oh, we, whatever, we're not going to do that. So thank you for the effort involved and for bringing that to us. And let's go ahead with a vote. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? All right, well, she carries. Thank you so much. All right, next, Dr. Campbell Voitel.
Okay. For item 11 on the agenda, 11A is the first reading of board bylaws. So I bring motion five, that the board bylaws be approved for first reading.
Support. We have motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel, supported by Ms. Mauer. There's really just one red line item in this. I'm trying to find the, trying to find the page. Page four. Okay. So this is kind of a precursor in some ways to some conversation that we've been having as a board around how do we get our, our policies in line with what is standard across the state of Michigan? And so the one change is really changing that word to regular board meetings each month to one regular board meeting each, each month. At least one that allows us flexibility to perhaps have a second study session, or if we need to have a special call, it leaves that, that available to us, but it doesn't pigeonhole us into how often we meet, or, yeah, how many meetings a month we hold. So that is the thought behind that. That is the first reading of that. I don't know that we need to have conversation about this particular policy. We can. This is our first read. I don't know that anybody has any edits.
Actually, I have hesitated to even mention it because it's kind of crazy, it's a minimal. Each, I think the month should be left in.
Okay.
I was just going to say.
Oh, yeah, fair. Each month?
Right.
Melissa, you and I read it the same.
Okay. I missed that, so thank you. Each month should be included. One regular meeting per year, that would seem to be quite a reduction. And then I think it's also worth noting that if there are any additional regular meetings that need to be scheduled, that language remains the same, that it has to be posted, and all of that remains the same.
What, so this is our first reading of this. What would that mean for the next, that it would be placed on regular agenda, I mean, consent agenda?
That is a good question.
Typically is the second reading and final adoption of the.
Is put on consent agenda.
Typically, but it can be on the regular agenda as well.
So I guess that would be my question, is if we feel that we want to put it on consent agenda, or if we want to have it on not consent agenda, or part of the, as a separate item?
Right.
I would say separate item because I am not in support of this change, so.
Okay. Okay. So we can go ahead and vote on this as the first read. Does that sound right, Megan? Do we take a vote on that? Okay. All right, so basically, we're voting that we've read it the first time, or that we are in support of the change?
That you're like approving the first reading of it.
Okay.
If there's any edits.
As modified.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, thank you. So the motion is approved for first reading of the board policy as modified. All in favor of supporting this approved first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm confused about what this means, I'll be honest. I'm, I'm supportive that I read it?
Yes.
I'm supportive that it exists? Is that what I'm supporting?
No, you're.
Sure, go ahead.
So the first read is, the board is approving this policy as written with the amendment of including the word "not" that was written and struck out. So it's approving that policy.
Okay, that's helpful.
As a first read. The second read is where it becomes policy.
So it's not about approving the language, it's about approving the actual policy?
With the language.
Correct, yes.
Yes, okay. That is approving the change the first time, and then the second time makes it a policy. Okay. Understood.
I just feel like, I, I just want to say, like, it's, I feel like it's a little bit different for this one, because a lot of times, we've had, and we have had discussions about this in the COW, so it's not like we haven't discussed this. It's just because of the discussions that we've had in the COW, that I haven't been about edits or particulars or whatever, but the, about the change itself, I'll be frank, this is, this is a first for me. So I appreciate that clarification, and I hope that what I'm saying clarifies why I'm asking those questions.
Sure. I think one change that we've made, too, on this board since January, is that in the past, we had an HR Policy Subcommittee. So we had a lot of dialogue in that committee that did not come to the Committee of the Whole.
Right.
Sometimes it did, once it moved through that, and then it was the first read at the board meeting. So that is one shift that we have made as a group to say, we all want to be a part of these conversations.
Right.
All seven of us. So it takes more time, it takes more process. In the past, there were many edits that were made to policies that, you know, all seven of us were not aware of the different nuances and the changes of this wording versus that wording. I was part of the HR Policy Committee for one year, no, sorry, two years. So definitely saw different iterations. Sometimes it would come to a Committee of the Whole or a board meeting, and we would make additional changes. But I think that's one of the changes that we have committed to, that we, as an, as a board with three new members, that we wanted each of us to be part of this process, which does make it a little bit clunkier for us. And this is a regular board meeting. We had the previous conversation during a Committee of the Whole. So this is the meeting where we take the vote, so that, you know, we maybe, in the past, would have had the HR Policy Subcommittee where some of those wrinkles would have been ironed out, and then it would have come to the Committee of the Whole, and then it would have come to a board meeting. So we were working to be more aware of any changes and shifts. So does that help a little bit?
Oh, no, it does, it does. Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. I think that I, I'm in support of and do like that change, that we're all part of that discussion.
Yep. Okay.
I interrupted the voting.
Okay, so let's go ahead with a vote, then. All in favor of this modified board policy change? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. All right, so the motion carries for three. And next, we will move into our 11B, Board of Education Calendar.
I'm bringing motion six, that the board approve the 2025-26 Board of Education Calendar as presented.
Support. All right, thank you. We have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel, supported by Trustee Mauer. I think we all had a chance briefly to look at, not briefly, obviously, it's Thursday, to look at some of these changes. I was curious, Megan, I think for the August 26th, is that hold still relevant, or should that be?
Well, I think we, we can make it be whatever you guys decide.
Okay.
But I think that HR will probably want that meeting for the hires.
Okay.
I think it's going to be a first.
It'll be a meeting. Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to kind of, kind of run through my thought process around this adjusted calendar, that I think of, you know, some of the, the essential capacities that the board serves for our community is things like, and we are the only ones that can do this, policy direction, curriculum and instruction direction, strategic planning and goal setting, future focus in terms of master planning and identifying needs for facilities and infrastructure, we're responsible for maintaining the fiduciary stewardship of the district, and also evaluation of our one employee, the superintendent. We have some changes in legislature that have required that we provide two opportunities for evaluation, the annual evaluation, which has been standard, and then with this new year, we also are required to provide our superintendent with a mid-year kind of review or, I guess it is called, yeah, check-in, mid-year progress report. Last year, last school year, the school board met 36 times, around that number. That does not include Subcommittee Meetings. And this year, we've really made the effort to bring the full board with our three new board members up to speed with the process and functioning of a board. And we've really focused our work through the Committee of the Whole, rather than the Committee of the Whole plus additional Subcommittee, such as Finance, HR Policy, and the Communication Subcommittee. And sometimes, in those, in that arrangement, there were occasionally topics that got missed by the full board. Sometimes things came to the full board, sometimes there were things that didn't come to a Committee of the Whole. So it seemed like that was an intention that we had, that we really wanted to bring everybody up to speed fast, so that we could step into some of this other work that we are looking at in terms of our five-year goal-setting cycle, the strategic planning. And I have been hoping that the expected outcome of this new process, or this change to that, is that every trustee gets the same, same information at the same time with the full board, with the opportunity to ask questions and gain additional insights into the decisions that we're making in each of our subsequent meetings. During this process, it became clear that we had some board members that were really wanting us to get to one meeting a month, and we had other board members that wanted to continue with the two meetings monthly, with the exception of, I think it was December and July. So to find some middle ground is where I'm hoping to move us to, that, from my, and we're, this proposed schedule would eliminate some elementary visits each year, that we would alternate years at the elementary schools. We would do a combined middle school presentation, and then we would also alternate Cook and our early childhood presentations that the board has been, you know, experiencing over these past two years. One other addition is we have invested a lot of money and a lot of resources into our instructional coaches and coordinators, and I think we've all found those presentations to also be very beneficial. As I was thinking about the function of building, or building presentations, I know for myself, serving on the board, I think I'm one of the few trustees who was here in the middle of the COVID planning and masking and kids out of school, or, you know, the hybrid option that we had. For myself, I found that those building visits in each building, particularly after COVID, were just really reassuring, like, okay, we're landing in a good place, Northville Schools are thriving, the students are thriving, teachers are thriving. And I think that, you know, we shifted those presentations to meet the needs of the board and the community at that time. As we look ahead to some uncertainty based on the changes at the federal level around funding, and the US Department of Education, a shift in both the policy related to the number of board meetings per year versus study sessions and committee meetings, I believe will allow the Board of Education to focus on our tasks at hand, in terms of ensuring the continued success and leadership in our public schools, both here in Northville and within the state of Michigan. The schedule we vote on in a few minutes is in essence a reduction of simply seven meetings, and will allow us to schedule special call meetings or additional study sessions to focus on responsiveness to these uncertainties that we're facing in public education. We have previously discussed the heavy lift of addressing board policies and aligning that with a policy service through one of the providers that we have, we will be looking forward to a presentation on. We also have a five-year goal cycle to focus direction around from the district's level, from the board table, aligning with our MYKIP, that we will be learning from our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. I believe as a board, we offer unique skills and are in unique positions to guide the work that only we can do of the district over the next five years, which will have a much, which will have a bigger impact for much longer than that. I think, and I know, that a change in routine is difficult for each of us. We each have losses, we each have things that we were looking forward to. I also hope that we can see this as a flexibility, offering us flexibility to respond to the ever-changing needs of public education, while giving us multiple opportunities to engage with building leaders, educators, students, and families, to see the ways that our investments are paying off. That's kind of my summary of kind of my thought process behind it. I've had the opportunity to connect with different people. I don't know if anybody else has anything they'd like to add. I asked Dr. Weber to connect with Ms. Bugar, and with Ms. Simon, just to make sure that this, this change to their presentations would be something that they would find supportive and helpful.
Yep, connected with several folks, actually, and completely acceptable on their end, actually noting that the ability to not only have the time, but to bring more to said meetings. The middle school piece, in speaking with our academics team, really, one of the big goals they have is to align both middle schools in such a way, from a pedagogical standpoint, from NYPD and so on. So this is also a very natural way to have them showcase what they're focusing on together. And so I wanted to make sure that, when you directed me to do those things, I did, and that is the information I found when I talked to folks.
Great, super helpful, thank you. So you, you were able to reach out to Mr. Jones and Ms. Provo, and run this by them as well?
No, I talked to one of my team members who was there, but I've had, I meet with Bill and Melissa, and talked to them a few times every week, and their excitement around being together in the pedagogical work that drives both of them is pretty astounding. So Bill is typically on some trail in the mountains right now, from my experience with him, and I think Ms. Provo is in Florida.
Thank you. Anything else anybody would like to add before we go to a vote, or?
So, I mean, we've, we've already discussed, I'm not in favor of the changes to the school visits. I think that's a very important part for us to have that connection to all the schools. We've discussed that, you know, previously in regards to the elementary school, and now we've, we've kind of expanded that, now we're, we're reducing the cook and UC visits to every other year, and I'm not really quite sure how I feel about the middle school thing, I, I don't quite know what that's going to look like, so, I don't know. But I'm not in favor of that, but I guess the, the new thing that's kind of throwing me here, and I talked to you about this, is that, I mean, so, last year, we were scheduled for 24 regular board meetings, and I think we had two special calls thrown on top of that. So 24 meetings in over the year. When we talked about this over the last few months, the, the thinking was, we were looking at, I think 21 was on the schedule then, I think, wasn't it? And now we're, now we're down to 16 meetings, so we're going from 24 meetings scheduled per year, to 16 meetings scheduled per year. That is a huge decrease to me, especially in light of all this discussion, that we have all these upcoming things that we don't know about, so we're going to, all the stuff you just listed, the, you know, the, the, the federal changes, and how it affects us, and, and strategic planning, and all of that. So I guess I'm kind of thrown off by this, we're going to chop out one-third of the meetings, and justify it by all this additional stuff that we have to do. And I guess I don't know what's getting chopped in this, and I, I don't know how we do this. It, it just doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. So it's not, yeah, so, that makes sense, right, that if in 24-25, we had 24 meetings, and we have a lot to do, that's shifting this, I hope, the way I'm seeing it, would be that we would reduce the amount of time that we are, I guess not reducing, shifting our focus to these, the strategic piece of our work, rather than engaging with learning from each of the buildings, in terms of those, those lengthy presentations, which are super helpful, right? We learn a lot of things. I'm not sure how it, I think finding that balance is, is where I'm hoping to get us to, that, that's where I'm hoping to shift us to move toward.
I mean, I guess what I would add on that is, I mean, those building visits were only, you know, the stuff that happened in the school was only part of the visit, so we're losing, you know, the time to discuss that, that happens after those, you know, after we, after the tour, and after the discussion. But now, I mean, we're not just talking about chopping off those four meetings, we're talking about eight. So we're talking about taking away entire meetings that were previously not focused at all on the school visits. So.
The reduction, oh, go ahead.
Well, that was the business meeting, that basically after we, you know, allowed the families to take their children home and leave the meeting, you know, that we, we drilled through the business. But I think that the sequence of meetings, I think, as described by Megan, is that we would have a very, our deliberate, deliberative meeting, which is an open meeting. So I do think that it is an opportunity for us to uphold up our end of our obligation to engage a community in watching and participating in our deliberations. Now, there wasn't any deliberation going on for the community to observe, if they even did stay in the audience, in any of these school buildings. We had an empty building at that point, it was immaterial. So I'm, I'm replacing a couple of things, or at least, you know, I think the model that we're, that I'm thinking about is that if we have our elaborate deliberate deliberative meeting, the COW first, that determines the business that needs to be conducted in the regular meeting, that that will be more efficient, because we didn't necessarily do that. Sometimes we had, you know, business before COW, et cetera. So, so I think we're trying to systematize the way we move our, our work through. And number two for me, is there's not a lot of deliberation. Let's face it, the last meeting I sat in, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to guide the meeting in the last time we met, but it was really, there was hardly, there was not any deliberation that happened in that meeting. And I think that's what we owe our community. Where we, where we listen, and we put out, we think out loud, we ask questions if we're confused about something, and we rely on each other to kind of bring the facts, as we have done our homework, to the table, and listen and learn from each other. And that's the kind of meeting that I, that I imagine is very important for the community to see, and respect the work of this, of this body. And I think it's, you know, I think it's a good, it's a good re, kind of a right sizing, a reshifting of the emphasis, when we embrace our community and the audience. Who has public comment, they can make comments on what we're talking about, but that we enliven what goes on at the table, at the community and the whole. So that's where the, that's where the heart beats. We can run an agenda, we can read the motion, we can second the motion, we can, you know, we can run an agenda, that's, there's nobody that questions that. But what we really can grow at this table is our respectful moral compass, as we discuss and wrestle with the challenges that you so well put in front of us, which, you know, are happening in the context around us. That's, that's a real, that's a really great opportunity for growth and development, I think, at this table, and I, and for that reason, we're, you know, alternating through half of the elementary schools from one year to the next, didn't seem like a bad trade-off to me. I think we're still hearing from what's going on in our middle schools. I know that we're looking, I, I remember the words, that we are looking for continuity between those buildings. It seemed like it was a reasonable expectation to hear those stories given together. We have our high school, as that's our, you know, our, our students at the endpoint of their career with us, so that's an important meeting. But the, the idea that out of the six elementary schools that we, that we alternate, doesn't seem like a big give to me. We're in three of six every year. And, and if it frees up deliberative space, and we can be more efficient in the way we act and get prepared for these big decisions coming down, I think that's, we ought to put our toe in the water of that. I think we need to give it a chance. And I'm, that, that's why I'm falling on the, on the support side. So.
Clarify for me, Kim, because I'm a little bit confused by what you're saying, Rachel, I'm understanding, because what I hear you saying is you want to have more virginity for deliberation. Which to me would be an argument for bylaw change, which would allow us to have a reduction of meetings, but this schedule doesn't reflect a change in opportunity for deliberation, because it's the same amount of cows as we've always had, isn't it?
Right.
The amount has changed. So even having one less school board meeting doesn't give us more time to cow?
Well, we can, we can add, the, the idea would be that we can, when the district comes to us to say, we have, we've addressed this issue, the board has given us approval to add in whatever the next thing would be, we, we need you to give us policy on this change that's happening at the federal level, or we need you to give us feedback on this budget need. We can then either, if we have time and space in our typical meetings, we can address it there, or if it's something that requires more time, we can add those additional meetings.
So we would have a special call, Kyle?
Right.
I can hear, I hear that point, but if that's not reflected in the schedule, I, I just want to clarify that, that's not reflected here. The idea, I know that you're saying that we could do that, it's not reflected in this.
Isn't that the point? Because if it were reflected in here, wouldn't that hold us to that? And this just gives us the option that if it's necessary, it gets added?
Yes.
As opposed to putting it on the calendar, which would then require it to happen?
Yes.
If that's what, that's how I'm understanding it.
Yes.
Yes, I, I think that the concern that I'm having, and I'm echoing what Ron is saying, is that we are saying that we want to be able to do that, but we're not setting ourselves up for that.
Well, we can't guess in advance about when we would need those, so that's why they're not on here. So it's giving, this is opening up the space to say, yeah, we need more deliberation time, so let's add a special call in here. Is, is that what's happening?
More flexibly adapted to the needs.
I guess my concern there is, when I talked to you, you kind of indicated, maybe, you know, we'd throw one or two more meetings in here, we're still talking about eight loss, add in a couple, you know, one or two. Last year, we had 24 scheduled, and we did add in a couple meetings, so we had 26. So I mean, so.
That's a lot of meetings.
And, so, I don't think that is, that's aside from this.
This puts us at, with two committee of the whole for September.
Which.
On nine, nine, and nine twenty-three.
Okay, but, yeah, I don't see that reflected on here, but, I mean, so if we added in a couple, I mean, we're still talking about, we're, we're six meetings, eight meetings down from, from last year. And, and, I don't know, so, I, I see that as a big loss. My second concern, and again, I've shared this with you, is we're, you know, talking about adding cows, is that, Kim, you had mentioned, like, you know, this is, deliberation is something we provide, you know, to the community, I don't remember the exact words you used, and I've shared this, and I've iterated this before, our cows, nobody knows what's happening in those cows. The only way somebody knows is if they show up every single cow, and just sit here and hope that a topic of interest comes to them. We don't publish what topics are being discussed, nobody has any idea. And so increasing cows, I feel that's, I, I get what you're saying, Kim, but I feel that's being even less transparent to the, to the public about what's being discussed, it's, it's moving more stuff into where people just need to show up. And I guess, in, in my field, we kind of call that hiding in plain sight, there's a lot of stuff, and you have to commit a lot of time to sifting through and finding what's in there. You know, we have a lot of people, you know, we don't have people that, too many people that show up every single meeting, we have a few. Typically, it's, you know, people show up when a topic of interest is there for them. We've seen that again and again, a couple times a year, something important comes up and people show up. And what we're talking about here is increasing the cows, where even more often, people will not have that opportunity to, to see what's, what's there.
To me, the outcome of the deliberation is what we want to get to, not necessarily, like, I mean, the deliberation is our process, right? How we have conversations about certain topics, so that we can land on a thing to give direction to the district, is how I see deliberation working.
And if this could be helpful, page 51 in your packet, I have a sense that some people haven't looked at.
I don't think people necessarily show up to meetings just to hear the answer.
That's the proposed COW calendar. With the ability, you know, potential topics and so on. To the point of what Ms. McIntyre said, there are at least three areas that I believe the board will be tasked with really digging into this year. One will be strategic planning, frankly. Our district has had what I think people think is a goal list, but it's not a true strategic plan, where the community has been involved in it, where staff has been involved in it, truly have been dictated from the board level. So in order to do that in a way that honors the voices of the district and the community, that's something that would take a considerable amount of real thoughtful time and effort. The next one is a potential. We mentioned this last August, it kind of stopped there, but it's something I'm going to press the board to consider again, which is a master planning process for the district ahead of a potential bond in 2028, is we have surrounding communities currently going for bonds this fall, bonds of $425 million, bonds of $350 million of no tax increases. I would be negligent, as your superintendent, to not recommend that this board should study well ahead of time what needs could be in 2028. That would be a perfect exemplar of what could take time. I've been in COW meetings that have been five to six hours long, deliberation occurs in those meetings, and that is not out of the norm. I think the minimum for a COW meeting, and Megan, please check me on this, time-wise, is two to three hours on that, if not substantially more. From a time standpoint, sometimes I can't predict how long the board would like to deliberate about things. You know, we'd have to be mindful, in fact, I'd hate people to show up for something, but it's 11:30 at night, and we've hit our limit, and we haven't hit there as well. So I think that's important to be focused. And third, mention on this was, and Ms. Peck has talked about this for some time, is the exploration of a, a single-source policy provider, that allows the board to do that work, and the only people who can really do that work are the seven of you. Not to say without the guidance of Ms. Peck, but I know we have a couple veterans on here of the old policy subcommittees, and you know what that takes. You weren't, looked at the words and so on. So those would just be three examples of, that would be taking time. Having the ability to have space in the schedule to attend to those kind of single-issue things for an evening, where we start at 6:30 instead of 9:30 to begin that conversation, I think was part of the impetus of why you all came up with this. If I'm misspeaking, please correct me, but I wanted to make sure that folks understood when they're looking at this schedule, that is not, that is a schedule of, of the voting meetings. But there's a whole bank of other meetings behind that, that are called committee of the whole meetings, for those at home. The process here was, and this really came from feedback from a former board member in my evaluation, I remember it. And he said, you know, this idea of subcommittees, as the board changes, having, shifting to committee of the whole meetings for everything may make more sense, so people can get up to speed and feel part of the process. And I'll tip my hat to him and say, I think that was a great suggestion, frankly. Having sat in many subcommittee meetings where there are three board members, and then we come to a committee of the whole, and then invariably, we talk again for another healthy amount of time for the other four, who weren't there, because then you'd have a quorum, and then it would be that meeting, and it'd be difficult. So from a transparency standpoint, us having COW meetings as really the primary engine of how we deliberate, in my opinion, is far more transparent than subcommittee meetings. Now, it's going to be more painful at times, I think we've experienced that when I talk about the amount of time. We have left this building well after midnight on occasion, and it is, the diligence is done, but I will contend. But I will contend, I feel the seven of you have a much clearer idea of what's happening after coming out of those cow meetings, with our team presenting and working with you and all of us being together.
I don't know that, I think what I'm hearing is no one has an issue with continuing with no subcommittee meetings. I think that it was a good move to move all of that discussion into the committee of the whole. I think it did, it brought everyone up to speed, and you're able to learn about all the different pieces, rather than just be stuck in your, in your, not stuck, but be in your one, yes, in your one subcommittee where you know a lot about that, but you're missing, you know, the finance or the HR policy. So I don't know that anyone is hoping to go back to subcommittees.
Agreed.
I think, you know, we've talked about this at two committee of the holes already. I think it's pretty clear that I disagree with this, this change. You know, Lisa, you mentioned that as a board, one of our, we're like, we're tasked with overseeing the budget. And I think one of the things that I appreciate the most about the building visits and the building presentations is being able to see our board votes and our decisions in action, and how, you know, our decisions are playing out in the classroom. And I, one of the things that we are supposed to do is to then, when there are questions from the community about, well, why did you make this decision? Why are we spending money on math coaches? Or whatever the question might be. Because we've been in the buildings and we've had that interaction with our teachers and with the administration of each building, we have more background that we can, you know, pull on to basically justify how we're spending money, which is part of what we're supposed to be doing, is making sure that the way that we are spending money, it's in best interest of the students. And so I'm concerned that by decreasing the building visits and the building presentations, that we're gonna, we're gonna be losing that key aspect of what those presentations are for, is to show us as a board, this is, you know, the new, the innovation that's taking place at the elementary level, this is the innovation that is, you know, taking place at Cook. And I think it's, I'm really concerned that by decreasing these building visits, that we're going to lose some of that.
A little of that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad to say that we still have three elementaries, right?
Yeah.
And we'll still have the contact with the middle school, and the high school would be an annual meeting as well.
I think we also need to make sure we're not losing sight of the impact that these school building presentations have on our building leaders and the students and the families and the educators, kids getting pulled out of class time to work on these presentations, educators especially, I think, at the elementary level, who really want to go all out to show something wonderful that they're doing. You know, as Kim mentioned earlier, and Lisa, I think you mentioned as well, you know, there is a lot of uncertainty about what is going to be coming towards education and our teachers, and there's a chance we're going to be trying to do more with less and asking our educators, who have been doing that for however many years, to do that even more does not feel right to me as a former educator myself. It just doesn't feel right that we're asking them to do these presentations so we can go and watch, you know, their cute little show, which is nice, but, you know, and maybe it's because I'm newer on the board, but these presentations haven't given me substantial information about what is actually happening in our buildings. Like, they're nice, and it's enjoyable, but it's a big ask for our educators, and I'm not okay with that.
Exactly. I just want to jump in with a few things I've heard. I'm hearing the concerns that we're taking, cutting it, making less time, but we're going to need more time to do more of the work. So I do see it as this is just a flexibility piece, why we're cutting the Board of Education meetings, so we can have the flexibility to have more cows. And then it does run, I completely hear what you're saying, it's kind of like a mismatch between what Lisa and Kim might be saying about the deliberation, where Lisa's saying the deliberation's not really the point to show the public, it's the outcome, where Kim was kind of saying we should show more to the public. I have to say, I agree with Lisa more in this point, is that it is more of the outcome. And for the cows, I completely get what you're saying about the agenda, but I just feel like the transparency piece, it's kind of like a misnomer. So as a board of education, I don't expect to sit in a meeting with Devin, for instance, and his staff, to hear every single detail of what they're discussing when they come up with a financial decision to present to us. That's their job, and we're letting them do that, and I think the public has elected us to do our job, which is to deliberate these policies and come up with an outcome. So I don't think it's a transparency thing, it's just we're doing our job, just like, I'm not going to sit in with every single meeting with these folks here, because they're doing their job to bring to us. So that's where I stand on that. And I completely hear you about elementary schools, and I actually love going to elementary schools and all of it. I, and I get so much information, because we don't know what we're getting out of all the policy and vision we set, so I actually do love it. The thing is, I am okay with the three elementaries, and to be fair, I do have elementary children, so I'm very much in that elementary space where you all aren't. So I can get where you would miss it more than I would. But I think for a board, what are our goals? It's vision, accountability, it's leadership, communication, policy. Where we go to the schools, I think that's part of our goal that we should be doing to monitor. We're monitoring that we're meeting our goals, but I think with all, going to every single elementary and all the schools, it's too much time on monitoring, where we now need to spend more of our time on the vision and the policy. So I feel it's a shift from our goals, and so I'm okay with less monitoring and doing more of the vision and the policy, which I do think will make more time. I think we will have more cows, because I just hope they don't get longer than they are already. So I am comfortable with this schedule. I hear you all, I hear you all of what you're saying, and what you are saying is very important. And I do agree with you, but I am okay with shifting. So those are just my thoughts about it.
Makes sense. I think it is hard to find the, we want to do it all, right? We would all love to be a part of all of those things, and I think that the times are asking us to lead and shift a little bit. I have concerns that, you know, if we, which is not what's up for a vote, if we were to do like we did before, would we have to then cancel a building visit, because we have something really critical that we need to talk about and make a decision about? For me, this is a planful way to lead and know that, at least for this time period, that the need is for us to do more visioning and to do more planful conversation around, how do we adjust with the times? How do we adjust with what the instability is going to require us to make hard decisions around?
I guess I'm, I have a lot, I don't want to reiterate the school visit, I feel like we've talked about that ad nauseam. But what I hear a lot about is this need for deliberation, this need to meet, and all these things that were going to be put upon us, this schedule does not reflect that. The schedule is stripped down. And so now what I'm thinking is, okay, we're going to get a call on Wednesday, we need to meet next Tuesday. Is this going to be an ongoing thing, where we're going to be having all these constant special meetings? Because if we know that we're going to be charged with these things, why wouldn't we prepare for that within the schedule? So let's say we decided to reduce the number of school visits, but we kept the amount of meetings as a whole. I mean, we're deliberating right now, so this idea that we don't deliberate in school board meetings, I think we're proving wrong right in the present moment. So I guess I'm just, this, it, this makes me concerned, we've already discussed the school visit aspect, I'm also concerned about the reduction of meetings in and of themselves. I, you know, we very rarely have meetings where I feel like, oh, we didn't need to be here. So I don't, I personally don't know, we can continue to discuss it, I don't really know if it's necessary. I guess I have a question about, since we have not voted on changing our bylaws to have one meeting, can we vote on this schedule, which only has one meeting a month in some of them?
Good question.
We're all like, here we are.
Well, didn't we just vote on?
The board does have, they updated their bylaws, so that you can, you can just have a first reading. I mean, that can be part of the decision tonight, is that you're just going to have one reading of the updated bylaws, which would then allow you to do that.
Okay.
That was a recent update to the bylaws.
That makes sense. Okay, so I guess that's where we could be at, then.
So we don't have to have a second reading at the next meeting, then? That would be our first and only reading.
Yeah. And we made the change to one per month, rather than just one per year, that would be strange. We made that change, and then it seems like we could move forward and vote on this, and then, I mean, my hope would be, and my ask would be to ourselves and to the superintendent and his team, that it isn't like Wednesday, we have an immediate need. I think that the team has been much more planful around, you know, we have an update, we need to meet about X, Y, and Z, and it's generally several weeks in advance.
That's true, but a lot of times it's added on to a meeting we already have, like we're discussing negotiations, or we're having a meeting after a cow, or whatnot. It's added on to something we already have, not in and of itself, like as an outlier.
And I think in my first year on the board, because it was COVID.
Yeah.
We had some moments that we didn't have a meeting planned, and then we added a special call at a different time on a fourth Tuesday then. So trying to make that shift, so that we don't end up with four Tuesdays a month, that max would be three Tuesdays a month that we are meeting. If that makes sense.
My other little aside is that, and I think you kind of, is the length of the meetings is themselves, is that we're going to have, every time we meet, we're going to be meeting till 11:30 at night, because we are only meeting twice a month, many months. That's another issue I have. But I'm not going to make or break when I vote, but I'm concerned about that as well.
And I think for some folks, and I think Secretary Meyer, you were part of this, there are times where we have to have, and there are reasons in the bylaws that we have to have a closed session, and oftentimes, we can't dictate when that is. It could have to do with, could have to do with negotiations, could have to do with employee discipline, could have to do with things that we can never predict. So I want to make that clear to the public, that some of the things you're referencing are things that are absolutely things that are beyond our control, that we have to attend to as an add-on to meetings, or sometimes to call at because of the timely nature of it. I won't blame Ms. Peck for that, because of the typical HR stuff, but they're just things that we indeed have to do and to get our heads around. And I think, interesting comment regarding length of meetings, I think that, you know, being mindful of our focus on how many agenda items we're really realistically trying to do, and what are those big rocks we're trying to lift, are important for all of us to come to, whether it's our team over here or the whole room at all. So we make sure that, again, part of that vision is, if it is policy, that that's what that cow meeting is. I think there's times in the past, and me being in my, going into my fourth year, I've certainly learned a lot in three years, of, there's a desire to want to do more, thinking that that's better. And sometimes what we do in that situation is, too many times, being at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, when many of us have been up since, sitting at work since 7:00, 7:30, trying to think clearly on behalf and make big decisions or think through things. So I don't have an answer for you on that. I was just pointing out the notion that, for the public, that there are times that we have to go into closed session that unfortunately, we don't see coming until pretty shortly ahead of time. But by peering down meetings into such a way that we're focusing on one or two big type of rocks, and I gave three examples, I think will help us with our clarity of thought and execution. That would be my offer.
All right, I appreciate everybody's perspective.
I would like to comment and one more thing. A couple people had mentioned about the, my comments on the cow and letting the public know what's being discussed. There were a couple comments about our accountability of the public is on the outcome of the vote, not the discussion. People can get the outcomes by looking at the meeting minutes. People don't show up at these meetings, and the Open Meetings Act doesn't make, require these to be open, so that people can hear the outcomes, so that people can hear the discussion. That is why people show up here, that is why people want to know what's going on, and that's why people feel that they haven't been brought along on the conversation when discussion happens in the cow, and they don't know about it, and then suddenly, by the time they hear about it, it's ready to be voted on. So I disagree with that point.
All right, thank you for sharing that.
Can I just offer something, Ron? Is that we might be changing our culture, in that having our public present during our cows might become more routine. Curiosity might drive them to the cow, and I hope that that happens, because I think it will be an authentic view of what the, what the heavy lifting work is, that's occurring at this table. I think also, to be perfectly honest, it might attract some people who maybe had never thought about running for a board seat, and be attracted to the substantive kind of conversation and develop some respect for how we come to closure and decision that gets voted on eventually. So I think that, you know, it creates, it's a culture change, and that the cow doesn't have to be a big gaping hole of, you know, darkness, that it will be where you go to get into the rhythm of what's happening at the board table. I hope it does, and I certainly am going to talk about it like that to the people and my constituents that I speak to. Come to the cow, that's where the heavy lifting and the good work happens. It might be ugly sausage making, that's for sure, but sometimes good outcomes, you know, hopefully, most of the time produces the best outcome, because not, nobody is trying to debate their position and sell their position. We're all trying to find a common ground, where, well, it's called consensus. Come to consensus in a way that best helps our students, our kids, and our district. And so that's, the community should see that, they should see that. And I hope that the culture changes.
I absolutely agree with you. I, I mean, that's why I was, they were, like, actually, the building visits, the cows were my favorite thing, and that's why I was here every cow for two years before I ran. But the truth of the matter is that we did have 11 cows last year, and for the most part, people didn't show up for them. We did have, I don't know if it was 10 or 11 the year before that, people generally didn't show up for them. People do show up when they know what's going to be on the agenda. And if, if we want people to, if we do want to change that culture, maybe we need to bait them in, because that's, yeah, that's, that's, you know, that's, once you see it and you understand a little more what's there.
Yeah.
And so that's just, I just, I just disagree with that notion that, that our accountability is only the outcome of the votes, and that that's the important part.
Yeah, I think this is healthy board conversation, right? That we're not one single mind. We get to a place where we move things forward and we address the needs of the community. Okay, let's move towards a vote, then. All right, we have motion properly presented by Dr. Chambault, supported by Ms. Maurer, all in favor of this calendar as presented. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And we have four yeses, and three noes. Motion carries. And then, thank you for the rich conversation, I think it will help us move forward, and, you know, this is new to all of us, right? That it's a shift, and it's a change, and that can be challenging to at least wrap our heads around.
The only thing I just want to reflect is that we are born out of the discussion with 11B, that 11A, we will not be revisiting the board draft, second reading, that that was our, that was our final vote. So, just in case, because that's prior, when we were having that discussion, that's what he says, I just want to reiterate that.
So can I, can I just jump in real quick? I just want, for clarification, because this is a new policy for us.
Yes.
This is a policy that we put in place, in addition to the bylaws, this is the adoption or amendment of bylaws. The language actually reads, the board will adopt or amend bylaws and policies after readings at 2:00. readings at two separate board meetings. The board may, by a majority vote of members elected and serving, waive a first reading." So what we will do is on, at our next regular board meeting, we'll bring this forward. You'll waive a first reading, and that will be the reading that will bring, bring that policy into, into play. Does that make sense?
So you waive after the first reading?
You do. You're, you're waiving the first reading, so the second reading will become, and it will be an agenda item. It will not be on consent.
Okay.
So you'll waive the first reading. This is the first time we're doing this.
Yeah. I remember sitting in the HR Policy Committee, talking about, what does this mean? And how is this going to look when we do it?
Does that mean we need to vote on this again? Because we aren't, haven't voted on that yet? Because this doesn't, this calendar does not follow our current bylaws.
Yeah. So we could do the, we could redo that right now and do, and waive the first reading.
Okay.
Because right now, the way the, the, the motion was read is that it was the first reading.
Okay.
And what it really needs to say, and Megan, help me, help me if I'm wrong here.
I'm trying to follow along.
Yeah. We're making the sausage together.
This feels like COVID again.
The first, the, the motion would really need to say that the board is, is waiving the first reading of the, the modified and amended bylaws. We're waiving the first reading, and that this is the second reading, and we're approving on second reading.
So that the board bylaws will waive the first reading and be approved for second and final, and, and adoption?
And adoption.
Second reading and adoption.
Yeah, final reading and adoption.
Final reading and adoption.
Yes.
So I think we should just take that motion.
I think you should today.
Okay.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for guiding us.
Yeah. Okay, so that is, um, eight?
Okay.
Oh, wait. Changing, renumbering it, or we're using the same number?
I think we're going to add another number.
Okay, so that would be eight.
Yeah. No, it would be number, I guess it would be eight, because we already read 11B as motion number six. We, we can make it be seven and then move seven to eight. Okay, let's do that, yeah.
Okay. Seven, okay, so then we're going to have a motion, which, tell me the number.
Six? Yeah, seven.
Okay, we're changing five to what?
No, we're leaving five. We already voted on five, so, and then we've already presented six. We haven't voted on that yet?
Yeah, we did.
So we did just vote on that, my bad. And now we're adding seven, which will be, um...
Okay, what's, okay.
Do you have a motion, or do you need help from Megan?
So, no, okay, so, um, seven is being used, that we, um, I have, I am bringing motion seven, that the board waived the first reading of, um, the bylaws, the updated and amendment of the bylaws. And, and this motion is that this vote serves as the second reading and approval.
Oh, support. Uh, motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Boytow, supported by Ms. Mauer. We've already had substantive conversation. Let's go ahead with the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have motion carries. Mr. Stewart, were you a nay? Yeah.
Nay.
Motion carries for three. Okay, all right, we got through that.
All right.
The sausage needs to be cooked soon, but the sausage has been somewhat put together. Thank you all for the rich conversation around that, and thank you, Ms. Peck, for helping us navigate this, uh, this change.
And she also, Dr. Campbell Boytow, for bringing that, in the air, through the motion.
Yes. Lifted up on all of your arms.
I, okay.
All right, so we have motion, it's now 008. That the superintendent's mid-year progress report for 2024-25 school year be approved as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Boytow, supported by Ms. Meyer. We talked about this in our, it feels like a long time ago, in our May meeting. Is that right? No, June, our June meeting. It wasn't that long ago. It was June.
I think that was one of the meetings, I think we got out of there at like 12:45.
I think so, yeah.
I remember Ms. Rieger Mauer celebrating her birthday with us in my Mid-March Valley.
39 at the board meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. And we had talked about the goals and priorities such as academic progress, assessments and analysis, timely and substantive communications, and then developing a PD mentorship plan for Dr. Weber for continued professional growth. We talked a lot about that. It was a rich conversation. I appreciate everybody's participation in that. And then the next thing that we need to do today, I guess, is identify the goal alongside you, Dr. Weber, that we're going to focus on for the remainder of the year. And we had talked a little bit about board and strategic planning. I don't know if you had anything else that...
I think the three things that I elucidated earlier tied in there, and I, you know, was jotting down words that all of you were using throughout the conversation that you just had. Somebody used the word "planful." And that's something that, as we set the goals for the remainder of the year, the primary goal I would like, in this, by nature, the goals that we set for me, many of those goals have a direct impact on every employee in our, in our system. And so being mindful of that, and being mindful that when we talked in our closed session, one of the things I brought up was the idea of making sure that we have a growth-based model for academic advancement. That, and I've said this openly at the board table, I'm going to say it again, put a quarter on my back. We're privileged to serve a community that we do. There are many communities like ours around the country that are truly blessed with families and students who achieve exceptionally high levels. What that can sometimes do is skew our own approach if we look at an achievement-based model rather than a growth-based model. So what a growth-based model does, for those who aren't educators, who are viewing at home or are here with us tonight, is really make sure to hold us accountable for looking at the growth of our students, especially those striving learners, and how important that is. So I would offer, as a board, that would be an area that I would like to be held accountable to, having a deliverable on a growth-based system. You have already went toward that by approving our iReady system, which is a much clearer growth-based model for students. So, being planful and putting those pieces in place, there is an intentionality behind each move that, that we make. And the intentionality around really taking a full year, and I'd like to thank Dr. Brock and Ms. Hoppinstep for leading that effort around iReady, was to, to see if indeed, and it came out that, yes, it was very well received, a growth-based model would work. So that would be one that I would offer. The other piece is formulating a strategic plan. You should see the beginnings of that. That's not something, if done well, that should happen over a month or two. And that will be rooted in the MI KIP, which will be introduced to in August, I believe, to the board when Ms. Polansky is here with us. And the third piece is really up for further consideration, and I'm not sure if we want to establish that as a goal, because I think you all need to have more time to discuss it, which is revisiting the idea of looking at master planning process. When I say master planning, we're talking about infrastructure of our community school district. So, for instance, we have 40 acres on Garfield and Eight Mile. And if you ever drive out that way to Mayberry, is school board members, understand that you are kind of landlords out there of 48 years of land. And so what do we do with something like that? What do we do looking at how many kids could be moving in? What do we do with the downs coming up? And my offer is really deeply assessing our facilities, engaging the community in that over the span of a couple of years, to see what we would like to go for, if we'd like to go for a bond in 2028. I had mentioned that surrounding school districts have no tax increase bonds coming this fall. It's substantial amounts. And part of my job is to make sure that I'm alerting each of you seven and the community to the fact that I want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to give our kids everything that they deserve. And a reminder that bond dollars and sinking fund dollars cannot be used for hiring staff, cannot be used to increase compensation or anything of that nature. So those are the three that I have in my head, but I'm open to any kind of conversation on anything else that sticks out to y'all.
I, I was just wondering about the growth-based model, because this is for the remainder of the year to get us to December, right? So for implementing iReady in the fall, how would that, how would we, how would we, what, what would data would we be working at?
Yeah, what you'd be holding me accountable to is what have myself, and definitely not just myself, I mean, this is our team, especially on the academic side, the student services side, building towards that by using, not saying that it would be complete in December, but the progress should be very clear that we're well on our way to getting there, just as we took a year to do a pilot for iReady. Moving to a balanced assessment system is going to take at least that. But if the indicators aren't there that anything has been moving or moving in a productive direction by the time we sit down in December, then I should be in trouble.
Well, what would that look like, though? Can you be...
Yeah, yeah, it would, it would look like having had committee meetings, engaging with teachers, administrators, just as Dr. Brock and I finished up the second half of this year, leading our grading and reporting and assessment. It would be initial ideas around, so what are the metrics we're really going to look for? What is acceptable to us? Part of that model also is a beginning conversation, and, and once we find out what our growth gaps are, what is, is a board and as a system, do we need to do to attend to those? So as far as giving you a picture of what the finish would be, I can't. It would be like saying, uh, when I'm very careful of my wording around a master plan, I'm not going to assume that you guys want to do it. I brought a person forward last year to discuss master planning, and there was, in my opinion, no appetite for the board to go forward. So, what I'm saying is, holding me accountable to the building of that model that we haven't had built here before. And it can't happen in three or four months. But what you should see is a very planful, use that word again, whoever used it, thank you, it'd be in my head for a while, approach to that. And if Ms. Polansky was here tonight, she would be able to give you more detail around that. I've already spoken with her around the expectations I have with strategic planning and a growth-based model.
So, I just want to clarify, just because I want to be able to go, understanding, I'm going into understanding, is that what we would be looking for is the development of the gross place, growth-based model.
Hard to say.
Yeah, and, and how much progress you've gotten into that from now, taking those various student groups into account.
Correct. Like what is the progress on building that piece?
Okay, okay.
Okay, so my question is, are we implementing iReady with, at the start of the new year?
We are.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have some pilot data. We already have pilot data. But we will have one cycle of measurement by the end of the year. Will there be student-level data?
Calendar year or academic year?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because you're...
Calendar year, yes. We'll have had one.
It will be in December, or...
Correct. We'll have...
By December, we'll, we'll have student-level data.
Yes, we'll administer it once.
So then, so would it be possible to have enough time to look at where the gaps are that were identified in that first pass? And maybe we can't, with, it's, maybe it's just point data. But maybe we could, we don't have a, we can't get growth from a point, right? But, on the other hand, maybe there's some comparability with what we knew about risk groups from our NWEA data. And maybe we can look at continuity between what iReady is saying about those kids that we already know about, right? And maybe we can just kind of asset test.
I think more of it would be really the progress of moving towards a balanced assessment system where we're using, and making sure it goes beyond the iReady as well. But it goes to grading and reporting and how we're really looking at monitoring and celebrating growth. It ties into our MTSS system. Do we find that we need to allocate more resources to tier three in MTSS? Perfect example, if I may, a segue into why having single-issue cow meetings, to me, makes a tremendous amount of sense. If a single-issue cow meeting is something like the MTSS system, Karen, I know, is going to be very familiar with it because of her day gig. She gets it. She knows what that is. Oh, seriously?
I just, I don't usually call it that, but I like to term it.
It's not a side of...
Yeah, I never said it. I didn't say it, and I'm not going to say that. But, you know, that's a more complex system than people, I think, understand. And more than hearing, like, we've got a good one, I want you to know what it is. What is, when one of our people talks about tier-two instruction, what does that really mean? What does tier-three instruction really mean? How are we providing it? What resources are we allocating to advanced programming? What alloc, uh, resources are we allocating to serving students who may, may need additional help in that tier-three or tier-two juncture? And that's the cohesiveness of building a system. And, and when we, at, Lisa, I think you'll remember this, like, one of the things I said in my interview is, you don't have to be sick to be better. And one of the things that I think can keep systems from moving forward is people can get very defensive and thinking, well, why don't we have that? Why didn't we have that? Why aren't we doing that? There's no blame or shame in that. It's just a simple evolution of building on things to find a way to better serve our kids. You'll be receiving, in the Friday, the report that we received from Hanover. The whole team went over it yesterday with the Hanover folks. And it's a nice, frankly, affirmation of things that we've, our team has been observing now for a number of years here, but it's a third party doing it. And some of those initial findings were around, are we serving every subgroup the way that we could? And if we really aspire to be the best district, one of the very best districts in the country for all the right reasons, not only performance data, not only top end, but how are we moving kids who are with us? And every year they're with us, do they improve? If they're not, why not? There's no blame and shame in that. It may be a situation where the seven of you are tasked with having to make decisions on resource allocation. It may be the fact that I'm going to put you in a difficult position to vote on programming that is current, that may not be meeting a need that, that we really need to meet. Resources are finite. You've heard me talk about time and time again, and you look at our bond public, or sinking fund publication, when you look, there's an intentionality of why that bottom row of districts and what they can raise debt for, there is a reason we chose to put that there. Part of my job as a teacher is to educate us around the things that we need. The seven of you, part of your core functions is to hold me accountable for that. There are times where I'm not going to apologize for making people feel uncomfortable about things that I think we can do better. I don't feel blame, shame for it. I know that our team doesn't. We just want to be better. I know the seven of you want the very same thing. I just want to make sure the community knows when we point these things out, it's not as if anything is, has been negligent or egregious, but in the sense that now we know better. So we do, we do better. So, so Karen, you're not going to get a fully baked potato, jacketed potato, I think they call them in the UK, with the, the cheese and the sour cream on the growth model. But what you will be getting at that time of year is a really good status report on the things that we've done to get there. And also, as we progress in meetings, we can do updates as we have, and as you've seen on many different occasions in the Friday updates, a consistency in updating you on there as well.
When we talk about the strategic plan through the MI KIP, I think it's also important that the board has input in that, too. I think that's what you were referencing. I just wanted to make sure that that's part of that frame.
Absolutely.
As we set that goal, that it's not, okay, I wanted to add that.
Yeah, the, the, I'm sorry, but yes, the, the, to clarify, so the MI KIP, we've had it for a year and a half, staff members K through 12. What we've been told the first time that K through 12 has been involved, and people have taught here 25 years, in having real input on our academic goals. Again, no disrespect to the past. We did what we did. We thought it was best. But when a system actually takes part, and I, I heard the message my first two years here, we need to bring the community along. Well, part of that means, and we really need to mean that for everybody. So that means that our educators should be having a role in building the expectations we have upon them to educate our children. And Devin Caddell, Bill Jones have done a really nice job leading that for the past year and a half, and we've already met early. And we've already met early. And again, Ms. Polansky will be leading that effort to bring that information to you. But we will be going through the standard piece, which will be, again, if you think about, you look at our COW list and what we have, having that openness of flexibility means, okay, this is the night that we go, and some of you may remember, early in the year, like September, where you go over the goals, you meet with a person, they explain, you have a conversation with a cult member around that. That will still be part of it. That's that input piece for you all that needs to be there.
Anything else? No. Okay. So I think we'll type in the rest of the goals, and then, so we'll vote on it now, and then after we finish those goals, then finish inputting them, then RJ, you and I will both sign it, and then it'll be part of the record.
And I'd like to thank the board for supporting the opportunity for me, on a monthly basis, to have the counsel of a former superintendent as we navigate these times, which, this is RJ Weber speaking, but what the Supreme Court did yesterday is really hard as a public educator for me to stomach, frankly. And I'm talking about our Department of Education. I'm talking about Title One money came today, but we don't know anything about Title Two and Three. This is going to, we're all meant, I don't know, we're all meant to be at a certain space in time, or you had to be everywhere you were to be where you are today. But my prediction in the next couple of years, it's going to take our very best to protect our kids and our families from a public education standpoint. And so I'm grateful that I'll have access to somebody who is a high-performing superintendent for 12 years to interface with, and that the board supported that. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
So does that mean when you two type, when you type this up, and do we see that? Can we see that?
I can share it. Yeah, I can share. Yeah, I think it goes into the, does it go into our minutes? It's part of our transparency, right? Like, Dr. Weber's evaluation is also posted on our website. This will also be posted on the website. Is that your understanding, too?
We can do that, yeah.
Okay, that's my understanding, is that the expectation?
I could also put it in the Friday update.
And the Friday update, too, for you guys to see. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, yeah. So, okay. That's my understanding, is that's the change in the legislature, is that it is also required that the mid-year progress report is also posted publicly. Cool. All right, so let's go ahead and vote, then, that we have done this work. All in favor of motion eight? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Okay, wonderful. Any added agenda items?
There are none.
Okay. We have just one public comment. Heather Hoag.
Heather Hoag.
Hot. So sorry, so sorry, Hoag.
Heather Hoag, so, welcome, all of you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this. So we're here to visit a district, but I feel, so I'm not new to board meetings. In doing so, I've been able to build a little network, and we've only done it here since March. The one thing that I was thinking about, or even discussing with other parents and such, is the COW meetings. So I didn't realize that I was able to attend a COW meeting. So it never really gave, like, Board of Education meetings, okay, like, those are public. But COW meetings, is there any way that we are able to put something online that it is public, and people can come and sit and have the opportunity to listen, you know, line item by line item? Also, could there be an agenda? Could there be minutes? Like, thinking about even the sinking funds, a lot of it was discussed, and I think a lot of people missed it, because just having those opportunities and having an agenda, it really gave us knowledge, as well as even going into the schools, like, just seeing the schools and seeing the construction, like we said, seeing the construction that is, you are voting on, as well as the dollars that us as residents are giving to the school district and Texas and whatnot. It's great to see. Maybe I'm not a Meads Middle School district person, but seeing those in the teachers and meeting people just at all the events has been phenomenal, just very welcoming, great and all. But I think there could be more with the COW meetings, especially, just giving an agenda, maybe not minutes, but like, an agenda of what's going to be discussed. And I think it would bring more people in, possibly, in knowing what you all are voting on, just getting more community involvement, I guess. And I think it would be a great opportunity for everyone, just networking, knowledge, everything. So, that's all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming. Okay. All right. Any other, there's no other public comment cards? Okay. Any other questions, comments from board members?
I have a question.
Okay.
Are we moving toward having a training? Do you have any update on that?
Yeah, for our board governance training.
Board governance.
Yeah, yeah, it is scheduled for.
Is that a hard date?
Yeah, that's a hard date. That is August 19th.
All right. Okay.
Yep, we have a phone call quickly tomorrow with the trainer, just to kind of meet her and kind of set a direction, so really excited for that.
Okay.
I'm forgetting the name of the trainer. Do you know it?
Julie Cummins.
Okay, yes.
What's the name?
Cummins. Julie Cummins. I believe it's her name. So yeah, that is a solid date for August.
Could you make a comment on the fact that the board conducts a self-evaluation, and that on our calendar, we have an opportunity for mid-year update on goals, which are the board's goals for their own growth and development? Is there anything to say about that?
Yeah, we can talk about that briefly, sure. In the past few years, we have done that as a board training, where we've done, kind of rated ourselves as a board, how are we collaborating, how are we communicating? I don't remember all of the questions, but we did some work before the training. We had an outside presenter come in and kind of facilitate that discussion, which is helpful to know, like, okay, what are our strength areas, and what are we, what are our challenges, and how do we set some goals for ourselves so that we can be as, I don't know, as strong as we can be, and as effective and efficient and all of that? And then also saving some room that as we've, if we've set some goals for ourself as a board, how do we come back and talk about that again? Like, are we meeting our own goals? Or are we track on certain goals and?
Are we making progress?
Yeah, yeah. How do we, you know, self-correct as needed? But yeah, I'm excited to embark on that process. We've done the, we have done the board selfie vow last year. I think we did it in November as well, which was not super effective, because, I mean, it was effective for us to see where we were at, but then all of a sudden in January, then we have new board members, and we have not done that as a new board, so. Looking forward to doing that. Do you have anything that you were, that was popping up for you around that?
No, I just see that that is new turf to address. So that's one of the things I'm happy about, seeing a COW that we're holding time for those kinds of things. And I also appreciate the fact of the comments, Dr. Weber, that you made in regards to looking ahead and where the center of work is going to, to be addressing master planning, strategic planning, the revision, you know, of our, our district's vision, mission, the student profile, you know, all of those kinds of centering documents that really inform our obligation and thinking at the table, keeps us at the level of asset testing, how we spend money, are we being successful? Do we, you know, you know, are we in touch with the challenges that the district is experiencing in terms of, you know, maybe soft spots in our student achievement? Are we making progress with our goals? So that's, those are kinds of questions that we should keep, we should keep circling back to. Are we making progress? And talk about those iteratively throughout the year, rather than waiting until September. Those of us who have been here before, you know, we have this kind of speed dating on, you know, the goals and the evidences that, you know, you've been here for that, Ron. But that's something that we should probably keep more in the front of our thinking and maybe visit more frequently than just once in September, you know, just what, is there progress being made? I think it's going to be easier with the work that's being done on strategic planning, with the information that Hanover's bringing us, and also the master planning prep, which are all processes that are even, are so important because they involve and embrace our community. So our job, and we've been, I'm talking too much here, but I just want, have so many, you know, points I want to make that connect a lot of what we've talked about tonight, is that we're all feeling mightily our obligation to the community. And that is our job, is to carry these messages of what the district is doing, where we're being successful, how we're, how we're in tune with where the challenges are and what we're doing about that to our community. And that builds relationship and transparency, as we've talked about, with not only our parents and our families, but our, to our community of non-parents who have, you know, who have our families with no children, but yet our stakeholders in our districts. So that's another segment of our community that we can't, we can't also let fall to the background. So I just think that there's some really great opportunities for substantive involvement for the board, as well as the community, in what we're going to be doing in the coming year, and that we will all, we seemingly are all committed to being good stewards of that information and getting it out to, to those, the different constituents that we represent at this table, because that's what we do.
Yeah, I think there's opportunities, too, in the quarterly mailer, to perhaps include some of that goal focus and that, you know, more of that information, that would be really useful for the public to, to gain.
I did want to jump in real quick, just kind of as I was reflecting on some of the conversation around, you know, we have all these new teachers coming in, and I love seeing all the new hires. I think somebody at the table mentioned, you know, the people who are just starting off in their career. But as we were talking about, one of Dr. Weber's goals, which was getting that mentorship plan in place, you know, when I, I can only speak to myself, but, you know, or for myself, you know, when I talk about being appreciative of educators and wanting to, you know, pay close attention to how we are supporting them, I think that RJ, I want you to know that that includes you, too, because you have this gigantic task of walking not only us, but our educators, our kids, through just uncharted territory, and we just don't know what's coming at us. And you have a lot on your plate, and I'm glad to know that you have somebody who can provide you that type of support and really act as, as a sounding board for things that you don't even know, you know, what's going to come and how to manage that. So I'm thankful that you have that source of support, and thank you as well for, you know, helming this ship, because it's not an easy task.
Thank you. It's a privilege, though. It's something for 33 years that public education has been my jam, but thank you for saying that. That's very kind.
The, I just want to mention that the New Hope Center for Greesport has their kids camp coming up on the 24th and 25th of July. I know we've all received several emails. I've been chatting with Autumn from there, and they're, they really would love to get as many of us as they can to just come take a tour. I'll be going on Friday morning, if anyone else is interested in going.
You're going this Friday?
It's 25th, 24th and 25th.
Okay.
I think it'll be like any time. I'm not sure how long it is.
Okay. It's a great camp. I'll be volunteering again this year as a clinician for both days. So it's really rewarding work, and it's good heart work.
Yeah, they're a great source of support for this community, so it's, anything we can do to support them would be great.
For sure.
Okay. I wanted to thank you, Dr. Weber, and you, Mr. Kling, for the informational sessions that you've been giving on the sinking fund. I know that I received my absentee ballot, and so I'm just going to ask those of you who are listening in to take the time to please go vote. It's a single-issue ballot, and I think that, as Mr. Weber alluded to earlier in his discussion, and you did as well, we are in uncharted territory, and honestly, it's scary. I've said before, our students, and I know everyone at this table's reiterated it, so it's nothing unique, but our students show up as they show up. It is our responsibility, duty, obligation, and joy to educate whoever shows up at our door. And having these local funds is more important than ever. I cannot emphasize that enough. And I know I'm just preaching to the choir here, but I just want to thank you for your time, and everyone else who's volunteering their time to get the word out, and thank the voters to continue to support our local public schools as we try to help our community as best we can.
And vote yes, right?
And vote yes.
Yes, vote yes.
Vote yes.
Sure.
So the Friday, Thursday update referenced opportunities for us to assist in getting the information out to the community. How do you see that?
I believe Melissa signed up for the library board. Thank you very much. Kim, I believe you are going to attend the city council.
And I'm also doing perks and rec. So there, Parks and Rec, they canceled their meeting.
Okay.
I did, however, I gave away a couple of yard signs.
Amazing.
And stacks of the flyers to Mr. Abbo, Mr. Carter from city council, Roland Wong, who's a township trustee, and a couple other people. And Mr. Abbo said he was going to share the flyers at their most recent township meeting.
Great.
So I did a preemptive Parks and Rec, because I knew it was going to be canceled, so.
Okay, great.
We also have an opportunity for Rotary. That was in the last Thursday update as well, noon at the, I believe, the Presbyterian Church downtown.
I think that's a Tuesday.
And we have the slide deck, if you choose to use it, is there, but I think you're all so well-versed, but no more than five to 10 minutes, just reminding those in attendance that August 5th is that vote.
Okay, so that's kind of a public comment opportunity in these agendas? I'm just wondering, are you just going to?
I was actually going to ask that myself. Do I just show up at the library board meeting and?
We'll make sure that they know you're coming.
And just say, hey, guys.
And then they'll give you, well, if they're like the senior advisory council, they'll give you as much time as you want.
Yeah, right.
But I don't imagine that I'm going to have to wait until the city council has public comment and then stand up and say something at that point.
Yeah.
So I'm not going to show any slides or anything. I'm just going to.
You could bring some flyers with you. We have plenty in my office.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have anyone that would be able to attend that Rotary meeting?
When is that again?
I think it's, it's Tuesday at noon. Tuesday, the 22nd at noon.
It's a Tuesday at noon.
Okay.
There's one involved if anyone's.
Yeah, you get a free meal.
Where is that one? At the Presbyterian Church? Let me see if I can move my call in.
Okay.
And I'll see if I can do that.